I'd like to call the meeting to order. We can stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody for coming. We have no visitors wishing to speak and no written communication. Have we had any board meeting, committee meeting?
I went to as an alternate the legislative committee meeting, which I will report. It was actually very interesting. I didn't really understand what it was all about. I just didn't know where to go or where to went. A lot of really good energy. Like it was really tons of people there. And basically there was a survey. Did you get an email that said that they're looking for who to fill out?
Unless I know them, I'll look.
Okay, maybe they just haven't sent it back yet. But basically it's just a survey, just basically of things to try to accomplish this year and volunteer for the different committees. So that was the main.
You didn't sign up for some.
We did, not everything. I signed up for all four. And it was just a big roundtable discussion. Then they have a big thing that's coming up in November is the advocacy training program. That's really interesting too, that they're going to get students and parents and business owners how to advocate to the more positive things for the school with the elected officials. So that was really interesting. I enjoyed it. Enjoyed it.
Great. Anybody else?
Mr. Beagle, myself, Mrs. Bezinski, the audit committee member, Josh Molecki, but they're here tonight, so I'll let them speak for the audit report. It was a very positive meeting. And Mr. Bezinski's done a great job bringing some discipline to the student accounts. So I'll let Josh Molecki speak for himself.
Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you. As Mr. Smith mentioned, Josh Molecki's here to provide us with the results of our annual external audit. So welcome, Carl.
Scott, did you want to just use the arrows?
Good evening, everyone. Let's see, a couple of new faces. Most of you I know, but I'm Carl Widmer. I'm the partner at Josh Molecki. And we provide the external audit services for the district. And I'm here tonight to present on the results of the audit for the fiscal year on June 30th, 2019. As mentioned before, we've met with management and the audit committee over the past couple of weeks and went over draft financials, had discussions about management letter comments from prior years, and some good sharing of ideas for what may be included in the management letter this year. But tonight, a condensed version, because we can't go through now the 80-page financial statements, but we could, but I don't think the next presentation wants to wait for that. So a condensed version tonight will give just a little overview of the audit process, what you can expect at the end of the audit as far as final products, and then also a little bit of a macro point of view and analysis and financial highlights of the district's general fund, which is the fund that of course receives the most attention by any user of the financial statements. Oh, here we go. I'll just scroll.
It's PBM.
All right. Sorry about that. So the products of our audit. Now first off, why are we hired by the district? It is a requirement that the district have an external audit report. But really, we're hired not to put together the financial statements. We like to present the distinction that those financial statements are not our financial statements. Those are the district's financial statements. We help compile them, the formality of putting a document together. But the only pieces of that report that we take ownership of are our letterhead opinions. So we give an opinion over the financial statements essentially to say for users of the financial statements, whether it be taxpayers and residents, banks, granting agencies, they want like a third-party verification. They want an independent, unbiased party to come in and take a look at the records that have been maintained and reported by management for the year and say, can they be relied upon? Are they fairly stated? So that's what our job is. So we come in, assess risk of the district, design tests to gain comfort and assurance over those amounts, and then ultimately provide an opinion of whether we believe the financial statements that are provided by management are fairly stated. So the big products of our audit, first off are the basic financial statements. That's the one you typically count on at the end of the audit. That's going to include our opinion over the financial statements, so the general fund, all the funds of the district. It also includes the single audit. Within that, the district is subject to a special compliance audit over the federal awards that are administered through the district. So in the event they receive federal aid and administer grant programs, once you hit $750,000 of spending, you're now subject to this special federal compliance audit called the single audit. So we sort of act as an extension of the federal government and perform that compliance audit for them. That's included in the basic financial statement package. Next is the management letter. In the event we had any findings, significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, or internal control issues, we'd include it in the management letter. But we also treat it as a forum for us to provide some best practices and recommendations that we think may improve or benefit the district. Next is an auditor communications letter. And essentially this reiterates the relationship between the auditor and management during the course of the audit. So we were contracted under certain terms. This auditor communications letter essentially goes back to say, did everybody hold up their end of the bargain? Management's responsibility is to provide the financial information. Our responsibility is to perform the test and ultimately provide an opinion. Finally, an extra classroom activity report. This is a smaller financial statement. It's on the cash basis of accounting, which is a little bit different than the district's financial statements, which are on an accrual basis. But it outlines the activity of the different clubs or activities maintained by the district. Are there any questions on the audit process before we move into some general fund highlights? So the first slide we'll present, again, the focus is on the general fund, but this is a line graph showing the total revenues versus total expenditures of the district for the last five fiscal years. As you can see, the trend on both revenues and expenditures, they're both on the rise. This is typical to every, almost every school district in New York State. Costs are rising, and you need to raise revenues in order to keep up with it, to avoid going into a deficit. So when we're looking at 2018 and 19 comparison to last year, both revenues and expenditures grew, but revenues outpaced expenditures. So much so that revenues totaled about $58.5 million this year, up a little over $2 million from last year. Expenditures were up just shy of $1 million. And I like to point out, $1 million, that is a lot of money, but when you consider a budget of $58, $60 million in the general fund, you really only experienced an increase of about 1.5% from last year. So normal increases on the spending side. So if the revenues are $58.5 and expenditures are $57.6, general fund fund balance grew at the end of the year by about $865,000. And an interesting point to make is when you take a look at the adopted budget for 2018-19, at the onset, when you look at the budget document, the district anticipated utilizing $1.1 million of appropriated fund balance to balance the budget. Essentially, revenues were short of anticipated spending by $1.1 million. So in order to balance that budget, in comes this number. Now, there are some planned contingencies. I know the district has spoke on that to maintain transparency, to make sure everybody knows what's going on. But when you look at the budget document, plans to spend $1.1 million of fund balance, actual results yielded a positive return of $865,000. On paper in the audit, when you look at the budget to actual statement, you did just about $2 million better than you anticipated in the 2018 budget. The next slide will show the equity position. And that's called fund balance of the district. So essentially, where did that revenue and expenditure activity for the 12 months of the fiscal year, where did that get us to at the end of the year? What's our equity position? So general fund fund balance, the total of 2018-19 is about $7.8 million, and that's up $865,000 from last year's $6.9 million. This graph is going to present the fund balance into two main categories, restricted and unrestricted. And that's really just to show how liquid or how available that fund balance is. The red portion, that represents the district's reserves. Okay? So those need to be spent on particular restricted items. The blue portion is your unassigned and assigned fund balance, which is more readily available to the district in the event they need some money. They can go to those areas. So as I said, fund balance grew about $865,000 at the year, and both restricted and unrestricted portions increased. So in the red portion, you're able to increase your funding to the capital projects reserve in addition to the retirement reserve. In the blue portion, you're unrestricted. Assigned balances, just about $1 million is represented by assigned fund balance. And again, that's the portion that's included in the 2019-20 adopted budget to balance the budget. And what that leaves you is about $2.4 million of unassigned fund balance. And that's a number that readers of the financial statements are quick to focus in on and see where are they. And a common benchmark for how that total balance of unassigned fund balance is evaluated is as a percentage of your next year's budget. The district is subject to compliance of real property tax law, section 1318. If this isn't your first audit process, you're familiar with it. If not, real property tax law dictates the district should not maintain an unassigned fund balance in excess of 4% of next year's budget. So it's a compliance issue. This year's ending unassigned fund balance of just under $2.4 million ends up at 3.96%. Rounded up shows 4%, well within the compliance limit. So it was a positive year for the district when it comes to financial operations in the general fund. You're able to increase reserves and at the same time maintain compliance with your unrestricted As far as observations go, the district had no reportable findings. What that means is there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that I'd be required to report to this group. We received full cooperation from everyone at the district. We visit just about every department. I don't think we talked to teachers, but IT, CSU, purchasing, payroll, business official, treasurer, we're all over the building. But it was a smooth audit this year. I wanted, I had mentioned that we had a good sharing of ideas with audit committee and management when it comes to items that we may include in the management letter. And I wanted to share just one of them that we plan to include in the letter, and that's surrounding cybersecurity. So what's important to note is in the management letter, a lot of people view it as a report card, or this is where the auditors may discipline or call out a certain department for doing something wrong. This observation that we plan to include isn't that type. In fact, we're including this finding at every school district that we own it because we think it's going to be useful. So cybersecurity, the risk of malware, ransomware, it's becoming more prevalent. Governments, school districts are becoming more focused on as targets. There's valuable data that's maintained at a school district that scammers may want to obtain and get some benefit from it once they get it. We wanted to provide a comment to highlight the district reviewing their current training procedures specifically to the teachers and the employees at the district, because we see those inherently as the greatest exposure or risk to being subject to one of these ransomware attacks. All of them have user stations and laptops that would make them susceptible to falling victim to one of these scams. So we said, why don't you take a look at what training is available to avoid, to recognize these scams and avoid those types of emails or phishing scams or whatever else might be out there. But in addition to that, also train the employees on if you do fall victim and you click on it, what do you do? I joked with the group when we discussed it before, I'm not an IT guy. If I clicked on an email and was subject to a virus or scam like this, I don't know what to do. Do I yank the power cord out and throw it out the window? Do I call IT? What do you do? So it's a practical answer that it's not too difficult to design training that would help the district in the event something like this did happen. There'll be a couple other items in the management letter, but they're really standard procedure for us. Updates to GASB's governmental accounting standards board comes out with new pronouncements for how the financial statements need to be presented each year. So we'll give a little description of each of those and when they'll be effective for the district, and also a policy surrounding cash management of some federal grant money. But outside of that, there were no reportable findings. As far as the drafts go, they're in just about final form. We anticipate issuing an unmodified opinion. That's a good opinion. That's a clean opinion that anyone would strive for as a result of the audit. And we are ready to release, ultimately pending the approval of the board, some finalizing steps with management. Are there any questions to follow up on in your audit?
Well, the only thing is, which I think was maybe left out, was the fact that the revenue was over $3.5 million. So I just think it's important to.
Okay. There was a change in the way that revenues were accounted this year with regards. Are you talking about the stop loss?
No, stop loss. Maybe a BOSI's.
A BOSI's refund of prior use expenses. So it was over budget, not largely over budget. But essentially, there's stop loss refunds or reimbursement as a result of insurance hitting your stop loss. Previously, the district had taken those receipts and netted them against the spending. This year's financial statements and budgeting going forward, the district wanted it to be a little bit more transparent and show them gross rather than net. So the revenues do show higher this year because they weren't netted against expenditures. Also, one thing I left out, last year's management letter, I know you complimented Laura on the improvements in the extra classroom, if you recall, last year's management letter had some recommendations surrounding an extra classroom program. Those have been addressed, so much so that we thought the item didn't need to be included in the management letter, so commendation there for addressing. It's nice when we provide recommendations and they're acted on by clients. So nice job.
Yeah, there's a few items I'd just like to comment on. As Mr. Beagle mentioned, you know, most of the revenue that we saw that wasn't anticipated was related to reimbursements we get for specific students. And those students aren't always known when we're putting together our budget projections in the previous April or May for the following school year. So it would be students that may have qualified for Medicaid reimbursement and/or students that qualified for high tuition, state aid reimbursement. So there are, there's sometimes variance in that. But I, overall, when you look at a 1.5% increase in spending from year to year, that's pretty minimal, given the fact that that's pretty much an open-the-doors budget where we're looking at contractual increases from one year to the next, you know, accounting for that spending. The other thing that I think I would highlight is our general fund and fund balance trend. When you look at that page, you know, we are still below where we were in 1415 for our overall fund balance and reserves. And the board in the long-range reserve plan, which we'll look at next month, had targeted $8 million as an overall target for fund balance and reserves, because that put us in a really good position borrowing-wise from Moody's. And it was an area that I know we're striving for. So in the previous year, we actually used $300,000 of our fund balance and reserves in the 1718 budget. And in 1819, we were able to replenish some of that, about $800,000, as Mr. Widmer said. But we're still below where we were several years ago in 1415 school year, so we still have a little work to do with that. But overall, the trend is moving in the right direction.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Just to the board to wear, so tonight we are adopting, the audit committee has approved the audit, and in our regular agenda, we will be adopting the audit. So just so you know that, audit committee has recommended that. And also, just from all my years in the audit committee, I'd like to commend Mrs. Bezinski for finally getting that extra classrooms off the management letter, because it's very nice to see that that has finally been taken care of. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you. It was a very interesting conversation at the post-audit meeting of Carl and the other auditor, Charles. We are taking that recommendation of cybersecurity seriously. You may have seen there are districts in the state where they have been attacked and they can't access their files, and as a result, the hackers demand a financial payout. And in some cases, districts have paid, you know, six figures to get access back to their data. And when you look at how those attacks occur, in many cases, they're preventable, because oftentimes people will send phishing emails to our employees, and they may even take my signature with a phony email and send it out to several members of the teaching staff and say, you know, please give me your cell phone number and birthday. And they think it's, you know, signed Anthony Fennella superintendent, and click here on this link in order to provide me with it. And we are lucky that many of our employees can submit those things out and report them to our IT department. But we want to make sure we don't rely on luck, and we're actually going to be testing it in the future. So our IT department will be creating phony emails and sending out phishing, you know, potential fake phishing emails to our staff to see, you know, who clicks through them so that we can target whether or not we need to do more advanced training, as Carl had mentioned. So they do say 90 to 95% of breaches are preventable through, you know, training and adult behavior. So I was pleased to see that, and I appreciate that recommendation. And we're taking it very seriously. Moving on to Dr. Shanahan and our elementary curriculum leaders, we have Mrs. McCabe and Mrs. Chittin in here to talk about our elementary curriculum updates. Welcome.
So thank you for giving us the opportunity to update all the elementary level curriculum work that we've been doing last year into the summer and then kind of projecting as to where we're going. So the focus on tonight with our strategic priorities will be on the learning and achievement strand. And all three of us in the report will discuss that. So I'm going to start off talking about two initiatives that are working, larger initiatives that you might hear about that are going across the year, and I've included a little bit in our board reports about those. And then Mrs. Patty McCabe is our elementary literacy curriculum leader, and Ms. Lori Chittin is our elementary math curriculum leader, and they are going to report on the committee work that was done in the summer of 2019. So moving forward, one of our strategic plans was, one of our strategic learning goals was to make sure all learners have access to appropriate and robust learning opportunities and achieve at a high level of growth or achievement. So one of our action steps in 2019 and '20 is to actually do a subgroup audit, where we're specifically looking at not just the general education population, but also our English language learners, our special education students, gifted students, and any students receiving interventions. We're going to move this, though, outside of just the academics, but also looking at the social-emotional learning part as well. So we're using something, and I apologize, it looks much clearer in my office, the building of an MTSS or a multi-tiered systems of support that actually, thank you, that actually joins the academic with the social-emotional side, because we know that we can't separate that out in a child. And we have learners that come to us who may not be achieving academically because of social or emotional or behavioral issues. So the district has historically looked at the, and not the district, the country, has historically looked at the academic separate from the social-emotional behavioral, which we don't need to be sending a child to a reading or math intervention if really they're having issues around self-regulation or just anxiety. We want to make sure that maybe there's a social-emotional behavioral intervention that would work, and then the child will be able to achieve in the ways that we hope that they will. So we're collaborating on this with a colleague of mine that I've worked with who's at Buffalo State College, Teresa Jansek. And she has run for, since 2009, the New York State Response to Intervention Technical Site, which was included 14 elementary demonstration schools and 10 middle schools. So I feel like the guidance that we're getting is very strong on this and well experienced. So you may see her around the district helping us out. So in 2018-19, we started off with a district-wide multi-tiered systems of support team, knowing that we wanted to go back and revisit some of our academic side of response to intervention, do some revisioning, or revising, and actually revisioning too, with the two integrative systems together, academic, social, emotional, behavioral. So this committee was established last year and has begun their work. And this is multi-tiered MTSS. I'm showing you one more time, just in case. So what we're really looking at is a comprehensive framework. It doesn't come in a box. We have to develop and design it to make sure that it fits our EMHRS context, our students, our teachers, and so that we move students in the right direction. So what we've done so far is 2018-19, we started our district-level team. They made some decisions on a new screening tool. We historically use Ames Web as our screening tool to see if we had any students that were at risk academically. That version actually ended at the end of last year, so I have this job and I get to help make the decision on the new one. So not wanting to make that alone, wanting to get input, and knowing that we wanted to look at academic, social, emotional, and behavioral together, we wanted to pick a tool that had all of those components in their suite of assessments. So the district-level team met last year. They reviewed several screening tools and suite of assessments, and they came down to one that we just concluded the administration of. So the district-level team has met and made those decisions, and will meet again on October 30th and look at the district-wide data to see how are we doing at our tier one, just our general classroom education? We should be, if we're healthy, we should be striving for 80% of our instruction in the regular classrooms should be meeting our students' needs. Maybe 10% is the historical number that we say might need a little bit more supplemental instruction, and that may not be enough for a small population, like approximately 5% that might need more intensive instruction, and that would come in smaller group size, different interventions, frequency of the intervention would be more, and duration might be more. So those are all the decisions we would need to make. So the data is now in from our fast bridge screening. And the school-level teams, I meet with Smallwood. We do our building-level meeting tomorrow. Windermere is on Thursday, and the middle school will be on the 11th. We do not do the high school, because it would be a waste of instructional time, because there are early warning signs that we collect through other, you know, other means. For example, if you're failing two or more classes, if you are chronically absent. So we will be looking at their structures and systems at a high school-appropriate model. So then the grade-level teams will meet after we go through the building-based teams. So this is what you currently have. And Mike and Maria Otto, before I was ever here, and you could probably share who else, did much of the development on the academic side. That's the response to intervention side. We're shifting now, and we're adding the behavioral side with the response to intervention side, so that we can look at the whole child. Same thing. Tier one is your classroom instruction. We hope to hit 80%. We may not quite be there, but that's what we're striving for. If we're not there, we're going to set goals to get there. Who do we target? What type of instruction? How do we have instruction that meets our students' needs? So that yellow, it should be your 10%, and approximately 5% in tier three is what we'd be striving for. Historically, if you have, I don't know the background or how much was done before around this, historically, this model took special education, put it on the outside. It's now back on the inside, because they found that people were saying, well, those, now they're over here, and we stopped problem-solving a little bit around that. Not in this district. Not in this district, that was what was happening with the model, so they resituated special education back in the center, so we're always problem-solving around all children, which goes back to our original strategic planning goal, all based on data, right? Data, data, data. So, the screening that we're using is called FastBridge, I'll click forward and back real quick, that's what it looks like if you go to the signed website. We picked this tool because it has all, it will assess in all those areas, reading, math, and social-emotional behavioral. Right now, we chose not to take on the social-emotional assessment until we look at what's currently in place, because we don't want to spend extra time assessing if it's not going to give us information that we need, but we know it's there, we might need it down the road. Screening is only going to tell us, Houston, we have a problem. It will not pinpoint the problem, so we will look to see the risk status of our students, who is high, who is some at risk, who is, you know, low-risk, and who is college and career-ready, and not really at risk at this time. And then, what we would do is give diagnostic assessments to further, and the teachers give those on a regular basis, especially in the primary grades, where there are those very discrete fundamental skills kids have to obtain to be able to be successful in their reading and math subject areas. So, you might hear that your child was given an ELP in grades K through 2, which is an early literacy profile. We marry those two data points together, right, and then we make decisions on students from there. So, right now, in this assessment process, what we're really looking at is the screening and the diagnostics to make decisions about how do we need to service kids differently? So, with the children, do they need a different, do they need something more in their classroom instruction? Do they need supplemental intervention? Do they need intensive interventions? And we look at multiple data points, because kids can go in on a screening and not be vested, you know, Christmas tree around, there's a digital component to it, so we use multiple data points as well. So, that's, the district MTSS committee decided on FastBridge. So far, I have to say, I spent three weeks not sleeping a whole lot, because it's a digital platform, and I just kept thinking, please do not let connectivity go down, because then it shuts everybody down. We could assess an entire grade level of six classes in 40 minutes, because it predicts general outcomes in education, we could do them in 40 minutes, you know, like on an entire grade level, which is quick. A screening is meant to get in and get out and give you the information about where to pinpoint next. So, that kind of ends that initiative and that goal. The second one we're looking at is the next-generation science standards, which you've been hearing about, probably when Ryan was here, there was initiatives around that as well. Our district science committee, sorry, I was going to say MTSS, district science committee last year evaluated a couple different resources, and they came out with that they want to amplify science, Be Still My Heart, because it's actually one of the few that's been research-proven by what we call the gold standards, which means with controlled metrics. And we know that students who go use Amplify, if used the way intended, will increase in both literacy and content science knowledge. So, we had really smart teachers that did that. This program came from a collaboration from the Lawrence Hall, I want to say, Lawrence Hall of Science at Cal Berkeley, and their literacy people worked together, and that's rare to have that combination. So, I think the resource is very strong, and we're excited to get moving on that. And here's where we are in the strategic plan with this. It was an incremental rollout that I stepped into in this position, and it's designated by the state. So, K through 2 this year is doing full implementation. We have coaching onsite with Susan Serrill, who has worked with the teachers for a couple years now on the pedagogical changes within new science standards. She is, she's in there, she can co-plan with them, co-teach with them, model for them, or plan with them, whatever they need, she will be there to help them out through this process, because it will shift their teaching a little bit. 3 through 5 is in the phase of professional development to continue to enhance their instruction and increase their understanding of inquiry-based learning. 6 through 8 is in the process of material selection. So, Amplify was selected by the committee from K through 5. Middle school now is looking at Amplify plus some other sources and making their decision this year. And then, 9 through 12 is understanding review. So, that is, that's the science rollout that's going across the grade levels. And science is part of the Every Student Succeeds Act, so we need to be really mindful about the learning and how that's impacting their literacy knowledge, not only in scientific literacy, but also in literacy in general, because it will increase students' vocabulary comprehension. So, we'll get a big bang for our budget in multiple content areas just by integrating the science in. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. McCabe, and she's going to share about the elementary literacy committee. Yep?
Hi, I'm Patty McCabe, and I am, I don't know, I think of myself as the facilitator for the ELA group of teachers at Windermere and Smallwood, and I'm just going to share what, where we are in our process. And I just want to thank Lynn and Tony for really supporting us with the way that we approach our work together. It is very process-driven, and as you can see, there are 16 of us on this committee, and this committee has been together a long time. And every year, near the end of the year, I send out an email asking, "Do you want to sign up again?" And everybody does, and everybody shows up in the summer. So, we met mid-July for three days, we worked together for about six hours a day, we worked through lunch, and we really enjoy each other, we enjoy the work, we're really highly motivated to work together, we love having cross-conversations across buildings, because we know, Windermere, Smallwood teachers know that they will funnel into the middle school, and from the middle school, they will funnel into the high school. So, we really want to build bridges between us, so that we have a shared language, especially in the language arts area, and as well as math too, but it's this collaborative piece that we really value, and we really thank you for providing us that time to do it, because it's not only horizontal alignment, working with a peer from, you know, a third grade across the district, it's also being able to listen and understand what's going on in the grades prior to them coming. I'm a fourth-grade teacher this year, prior to them coming upstairs to the 3-4 loop, and then also listening to what the fifth graders are doing and what those teachers are wanting them to come in prepared with. So, these conversations are highly valued, and we're highly motivated, and we're led by Lynn, and she brings in some really great speakers and some really great expertise, so we all feel very confident in the direction that we're going, so we can help the children. So, what did we focus on? Well, here's the timeline, I've been here many years sharing this information, so I'm just giving you a little flashback, we've been really busy. But we focused this summer on staying true to the comprehension staircase. We promised our teachers that we would keep the document alive, so we spent time revisiting, refining, and sharing what the feedback from our teaching staff was. So, as you can see, it's been a long process, and we still continue to go back and revise and talk, because we want to keep these important pieces in place. When we talk about ELA and comprehension, we're talking about some of these terms like students reading and being able to use their scheme or their background knowledge, being able to make inferences, using questioning strategies, closing their eyes, visualizing when they read complicated text, but really important areas to bolster their comprehension. So, this summer, we kept our promise, so all of the teachers came together, and we spent an entire day working with feedback. So, we sat together, and we, over the implementation year of last year, we kept notes, and then all of us got together in a room, and we worked horizontally and vertically, sharing out what did the fellow teachers think? How was the implementation going? What should we change? What was redundant? What could we do better? So, we sat down together, and we refined and revised the document, and we had some really great, powerful collaborative conversations about where we wanted to go and what we wanted to do in this comprehension staircase. So, we also talked about what kind of resources do we have, and how do we keep this document alive? And then, I work with Lori, working with new teachers, so that's always on our minds, about how can we help new teachers that are coming into the building, and how can we share this knowledge and explain this staircase, so that way, they are carrying out the instruction and meeting the goals that are expected of them, and how can we be there to help them do that? So, we revised the document, and by the end of those three days, the document was complete, it was, all of our eyes looked it over, and before students sat before teachers on the first day of school, every teacher had an updated version of our wordwork and our comprehension staircase in front of them. Then Lynn spent a day with us, a morning with us. Because we are the ELA committee, and there are so many of us, we tend to be a lifeline to our teachers when it comes to language arts. So, Lynn felt it necessary to share with us the MTSS model, and where we were going with this FastBridge screening, because it's new. And to have people on your team that have spent time learning about this new screening tool, and maneuvering, and using the digital platform, Lynn felt was a valuable thing to share with us. So, we spent a day logging onto FastBridge, looking at the subcategories and the components of the testing, and navigating the site, so that way, we could go back and share that with our colleagues. So, as the testing date approached, it helped lower the level of anxiety. Every team had at least one or two teachers on their team that had been through the process and could help out. And it did, Lynn, it went really smoothly. Then we invited Julie Flanagan in, the principal of Windermere, they've been doing some wonderful work around writing in their buildings, and Julie came in and was generous enough to share a good two and a half, three hours with us, sharing some of the documents and things that they've been doing at Windermere in regards to writing. We talked, our focus was on narrative writing, informational writing, and argumentative, or what we call in the elementary buildings persuasive writing. Julie was great, she brought in some of her assessment tools and checklists and anchor charts and rubrics that her teachers have developed, and she shared all of those with us, the committee. She talked at length about the process that the group of teachers utilized in order to create these checklists and anchor charts, and how they use the updated New York State Learning Standards, and matched all of the criteria up to what they were doing in each of the genres in writing. And then, she shared at length about how they collaboratively meet as teams and score student sample writing and compare it to the rubrics that they created based on the New York State Standards, which led us to great discussions about where are we going in writing, what will our outcomes be? Julie stayed around and answered many of our questions, and then she left many artifacts behind, and the committee spent time in grade levels, looking at sample writing passages, looking at their rubrics and checklists, and matching it up to what we, like many of the Smallwood teachers, are doing in their building, and looking at where do we want to go. We would like to, in the future, create a writing staircase. So, we have to begin the process, just like we began the wordwork process and the comprehension process, with let's take a really good, solid assessment of where we are currently, and let's set a goal of where we want to be, and let's align that to the standards, and Julie really gave us a really nice roadmap. So, what are our next steps as the ELA committee? This is where we would like to be. We'd like to continue our grade-level professional development, our work with Lynn, we would like to continue our work with wordwork and with the comprehension strategy staircase, and many of the teachers are at the point where they just want time. We want time as grade levels to work together, to develop units, to share resources, mentor texts, and just time to build our units and make them stronger. We also need time to work with new teachers and help them. It's a fast and large learning curve being a new teacher, and we want to be able to have time to work with them and share with them things that we already have created. We want to maintain resources, so most of us, I know, I can speak for myself, I'm old school, I like to have things in paper in front of me, I like to have my binders, I like to write on things. So, we do have that for teachers, but we also want to maintain our online resources. Some of our younger teachers are more comfortable logging on and pulling things off our site that we have, and we want to make sure that those resources are updated, and that it's a great forum to share materials. So, we also want to make sure that we provide time, space, and opportunities for people to work together. So, that's where we want to go in regards to ELA, and we will continue to collect data, we will continue to collect input from our teachers when we meet as grade levels, and we will continue to ask really good questions and have them share their thoughts and feelings of how are things going. And now, with FastBridge, we will also be able to see if all of our hard work is paying off. Any questions? Okay. So, Lori is going to share their elementary math written work, but before she does, I would like to announce something that she has worked very hard for, that she has been named a master teacher before at New York State. [applause] I remember her study for her math test, she hadn't done for years, and she stuck with it, and we're so proud of what she's going to do for our children, for home professional development, and bring back to the district.
Yeah, I'm really excited about the opportunity to go outside the district and learn with my peers, and bring things back to the district, to teachers, to students, and what we're doing in our building, so it is exciting, I'm excited.
We actually had three teachers get awarded as the honor, and I just signed them today, there's a letter coming your way inviting you to the board meeting in October on October 15th to be formally recognized.
Thanks. So, I head up the math committee, and we met this summer also, we worked for two days, in between a lot of other work that was going on, but we found the time to get together and put our heads together on continuing to improve our math thinking and what we're doing in our classrooms to help kids move forward, as we want them to do in every area. So, over the summer, we gathered not all of the committee members, but the committee members that are listed here from grades 1 through 5, from Smallwood Drive Elementary, from Smallwood and Windermere both. We left out kindergarten and 3K, because, not because we don't like them, not because they're not enthusiastic as all the rest of them, but just because this tool that we were talking about, and the topic we were talking about, really doesn't pertain to them at this point, it's assessing fluency, so they're working on other things. So, we did not have them present during the committee meetings this summer. This summer, or last year during the 2018-2019 school year, we began thinking about using running records in math, just like we would in literacy. So, we've done, you know, for many years, we use the running record in reading to assess how students are progressing, what strategies they're using, what strategies we still need to teach, what their fluency rate is, how their comprehension is, and we use that information to then drive instruction. So, when I heard of using a math running record, I thought, well, why wouldn't we do the same thing in math? So, I had read, you know, the book and brought it to the committee, and the committee was very interested in reading and finding out more about this. So, during the school year last year, they read the text Math Running Records by Nikki Newton, and we had some conversations about the usefulness of the tool and what we thought we might be wanting to do with it. And they also began to informally use the tool in their classrooms, and we used the forms and the things that were recommended and created by Dr. Nikki Newton. We watched some videos of her doing it, but I think getting your feet wet and doing it yourself is different than just watching or reading about it. So, they kind of informally began using it in their classrooms with students, and Lynn was kind enough to organize some videotaping of the teachers actually using the tool, because then we could use those videos to further our committee work and where we wanted to go with it. So, that was where we started last year. And the teachers on the committee were very excited about the tool, it was something that they chose to move forward with, so it was something I put on the So it was something I put on the table, but they really ran with it. Also, in 2018, 2019, we worked on increasing our understanding of fluency, that it's not just how fast kids are in math, but it's also their flexibility and their number use and their reasoning and their number sense and how accurate they are. So all of those things combined, it's like a multifaceted definition of fluency. So we began to understand that a little bit better, wrap our heads around that. Like I said, we began that video study of grades one through five. The committee members were brave enough to get in front of the camera, and Donna Freymeyer helped us out by coming in and using some technology that Lynn had purchased for us, which was great, to just videotape the teacher and the student engaging in that process. We compiled that collection of videos for grades one through five for analysis and future professional development. So with Lynn's guidance, she really sees down the road, and we were planning for down the road. If this is something that we do end up using, then we can use those videos to teach teachers about how to use the tool. So in the summer, we got together and the teachers were really excited to again get together and talk math. And if you know anything about me, I'm really planned and organized, and I want to know like ahead of time what's going to happen. But I tried to be more like Lynn. And we had many conversations about how this might go. And she was like, you know, you got to throw it out to them, you know, you got to find out what they want to do. So I was like, okay, I'm going to do this. So I had an agenda kind of plan, but I basically let the committee talk and decide what they wanted to do. And they decided that they wanted to slow down the process and not roll this out to other teachers at this point. They felt like they wanted to get more experience with the tool and use it with a whole class of kids, not just one or two. Because if we're going to present it to other teachers and say, this is something that you should be using, and this is useful, they wanted to be able to back it up and say, yeah, this is useful with all kids or some kids. And they wanted to make some decisions along the way. So they developed this plan, this pilot plan, to use it during the 2019, 2020 school year. We created a district definition of math fluency, so we kind of hashed that out and worked together to nail that down and give examples of what we meant, so that we can then pull that out to other teachers when the time comes. We watched the videos that we had made in 2018, 2019, and created a protocol for us to administer these running records with kids. So they planned that all out and got materials ready. They created a whole binder, like when they get going on something, like I really just have to get them started, and then you pull back and they are like all doing something. So people were on the computers typing things up, and they wanted to revise and tailor the materials for us. So, yeah, Nikki Newton is great, but they wanted it to work for them. So they had lots of conversations about what it would look like and what it would be like. And they created the documents for the binder, they ran the binders off, they had everything ready by the time Lynn had gotten there. So we have a binder of assessments and shared instructional resources. They have a plan for tracking across the whole entire year. We're trying to use it with all kids in our class, and then we're going to get together three times throughout the year and debrief and discuss what's working, what's not working. Is this a tool that would be beneficial to all teachers? And then how would we roll that out to them and make a plan for that? So our timeline, it started out with this pilot cycle of grades one through five, using the math running records. We're going to use them in September, in January, and May with our whole class and see how that works. We're going to talk about targeting instruction by using one student. So Donna's coming into my room tomorrow, and she's going to videotape me doing one student, and I'm going to track that one student throughout the whole year and look at their progress. I'm going to implement interventions based on what I, what information I'm gathering from the running record, and see if this really will be a useful tool and help those kids that really need it. We're in the evaluation process. We're going to think about, is this tool useful and efficient? We're going to talk about with the committee members, we're going to debrief on the lessons that we learned in November and March. And then really talk about the effectiveness of the tool, and is it something that we want to go forward to, forward with? Or is it something that we put to the side and do something different? So that was our long-range plan. Are there any questions?
I feel like you guys are doing a lot of exciting work.
We are, and we-
I can feel your enthusiasm.
Yeah, and we're appreciative of the support that we get, like Patty said, from Lynn. And she's super organized and very receptive to all ideas and helps to organize things. And Tony and the board for giving us the money and the time to be able to get together and do this work is highly appreciated.
One additional comment is, the one thing that makes the difference is the teacher, which is why I came here. It's always Tony's vision, it was, you invest in the teacher. So they come back and they get better, and we get better, and our students get more. So you talk about those subgroups and all that work that I talked about in the beginning, if we invest in them, which we do historically in Ann Hurst, that's how we continue to strive and achieve, right? So the summer investment that we're allowed to make in having these large groups come in and work, it's about the work together that really makes the difference for our students. So a program's a program. You have to have a quality program, but it's really the teachers, right? So I applaud them for their leadership, their time, their work, and their vision. So it's good stuff.
Yeah, this presentation along with the secondary curriculum one at our next meeting always gives me the opportunity to thank the board for your vision in terms of creating the structure that we have for our curriculum committees and our teacher leaders under Lynn's direction. Because without that structure, it would have been very difficult to navigate through the reform agenda that we saw back in 2012. That was the tip of the iceberg, but we continue to move forward because our folks learn and grow regularly. I would like to point out, they're doing this in addition to their full-time jobs, which is teaching classes all day long, full of kids. So this leadership is greatly appreciated. I am very impressed with the level of sophistication, enthusiasm, and professionalism. And I know that comes from your energy and your passion and work with Lynn, and it's quite impressive. So thank you. Congratulations on being named a master teacher. We'll see you next meeting.
I'll be back.
It'll be a regular.
It'll be a repeater.
That's all we have tonight, Detective Superintendent Colton, thank you.
Okay. We will need a motion for new business items.
I'll make the motion for new business items, E1A through F, 2A through D.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I did just want to comment that we did meet last week regarding the SmartSchool's investment plan that is E1E. And we had a variety of stakeholders around the table, and it was a well-led meeting by Mrs. Bezinski. And we're starting our 30-day comment period, and November 5th will be the public hearing. So it's well underway, maybe years before we see it, but that's not our fault. We're doing what we can.
Okay, all those in favor of approving new business items, E1A through F and 2A through D, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Mrs. Costini, do we have any follow-up action items?
No, I don't.
Great. And we will need a motion to convene a executive session.
I'll make a motion if we need a executive session to discuss litigation and the importance of the purpose.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, everybody, for coming.